Good evening, everybody. Before we get started tonight, I would like to ask Councilwoman Karen Thurman to lead us in our invocation.
Can you please bow your head? Dear Lord, we want to thank you that we live in the United States where we're allowed to worship you freely and we're allowed to speak our mind. We also want to thank you that we live in the wonderful city of Milton and that we are so blessed to be able to live here. Help us to remember that even though we may have differences of opinions, we may not always agree on everything, we're all here because of our love for the city and we would need to respect each other and the other people's opinions. Thank you for everything you've given for us. Bless us tonight in our decision-making. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to call the regular meeting of Milton City Council from Monday, July 20th, 2015, to order. Suti, if you would please call the roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the July 20th, 2015, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cellphones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that their speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria is absent for the record. And Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening. We appreciate you being here tonight and look forward to getting some work done. Suti, if you'll please call the first item.
Our first item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. Agenda item number 15-189.
Okay, I'd like to add on executive session for ongoing litigation. Is there anything staff would like to add? Or council? Okay, I'll take a motion on the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as prepared with the addition of litigation to be discussed in executive session.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion, Councilmember Hewitt, second, from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name, address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. Do we have any general public comments, Suti?
We do not, sir.
Okay. Then let's move on to the consent agenda.
Our first item, approval of the July 6th, 2015, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 15-190. Next, approval of the financial statements for the period ending June 2015. Agenda item number 15-191. Approval of a real property agreement with Georgia Department of Transportation for PI 0011675 Crab Apple Streetscape Project. Agenda item number 15-192. Next, number four, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Blunt Construction Company, Inc., for the FY15 road resurfacing projects. Agenda item number 15-193. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Clayton Joseph Construction Services, LLC, for the demolition of structures at 12608 Crab Apple Road. Agenda item number 15-194. Next, approval of a professional services agreement with Cheryl A. Hilvert, consultant for facilitation of the strategic planning retreat. Agenda item number 15-195. Our seventh and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a lease agreement with Mail Finance, Inc., for mailing equipment. Agenda item number 15-196.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Law, second by Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to reports and presentations. Suti, if you'll please call that.
Our presentation this evening is to the winners of the 2015 City of Milton Tree Photo Contest. Mr. Mark Law.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This year, we celebrated Arbor Day on April 25th, and we did it so by having our first Milton Trees Photo Contest. It's open to all residents of the city. We had over 100 entries this year, and it was very tough to pick the winning photos. We could have picked 20 very easily, but just to narrow it down, it was extremely tough. We had pictures of various angles and settings. Let's see if I can get this one down. This right here is one from Robert Myers. It's on Doris Road. We liked this with just the color combination, various colors and contrast in the buildings and trees and everything. It just really caught a lot of attention. Let's see which one is the... What am I doing wrong here? This is by Carla O'Million. O'Million is on Doris Road. It's kind of a real hazy, ghostly image, very, very striking photo. Yeah. This is our third place winner. It's by Anthony Asparza. It's taken on North Valley Trail there along Dinsmore Road. Very striking, really draws your eyes down the aisle, down the lane there. This is taken by Will Diamond at Birmingham Forest, Birmingham Park. Just the way the lights coming through the leaves and the trees is a very interesting picture there. And our first place winner was Anna Warren, an angle we normally don't see from trees, but this is one, almost everybody looked at the picture, their first initial response was wow. And so that's, that one, like I said, just really had a lot of response. But we want to congratulate our winners and thank all our participants in the contest this year. And the winning pictures, we would like to present them with a print. I don't think Anthony is here tonight, is he? Anthony Asparza? Okay. We just have pictures up here. We also have pictures on the back wall, but we have canvas, canvas print for the winners. This is Will Diamond. Will? You can go up here.
Hey, Mark, if you don't... If you don't mind, if the winners could stay up here and we'll get a picture with council and everybody.
That's a good job, Anthony. No, you can stay up here. And Anna Warren. Okay, that's it.
That it? All right, council, you want to join us and get some pictures?
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Suti, if you'll please sound the first public hearing item.
Our first public hearing item this evening, consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to fix the ad valorem tax rate of the City of Milton for fiscal year 2015 and for other purposes. This is agenda item number 15-184. First public hearing and first presentation was held at the July 6th regular city council meeting. Ms. Stacy Inglass.
Well, good evening. This is, as she mentioned, this is the second public hearing of the three required public hearings that we are supposed to have. The first one was held on July 6th. This one is tonight as the second, and the third one is held on August 3rd, which we will also be considering the adoption of the millage rate. Tax bills are projected to be mailed on September 1st, and taxes are due October 31st. The total tax digest is $2,238,970,962. Total taxes levied will be $10,592,572. That is both property taxes and motor vehicle taxes. Property taxes is around 10.2 million, and motor vehicle taxes is around 380,000. The property tax is increasing due to inflationary reassessments of existing property. It's increasing 5.48% due to the reassessments. When coupled with the upsurge of the digest for newly improved properties, the overall taxes levied will be 6.5% higher than 2014. The millage rate that we are proposing is 4.731 mils, and that is the same millage rate that we've had since the inception of the city. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Stacy on that? Suti, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. And again, if there's any comments or questions for Stacy, just say it's, at least the one good news on that, the economy and prices are rising, or values. All right, I'll move on to our next item, Suti.
Our next item this evening, consideration of a resolution transmitting a draft capital improvements element relating to the city's consideration of an impact fee program to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Regional and State Review. This is agenda item number 15-197. Ms. Kathy Field.
Well, good evening. I'm not Ms. Kathy Field, but I'm Michelle McIntosh Ross with Community Development. And this is regarding the impact fee program that we've been working on. We have a capital improvements element, which we'll discuss later on in the, on the agenda. But here we have our consultant, Bill Ross, to answer any questions.
Okay. I'll ask first, are there any questions for Michelle or Bill before I ask for... Suti, is there any public comment?
There is not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, but then is there any questions or comments from council to Mr. Ross or staff? Okay, I'm not hearing any, so thank you, sir. And we'll move on to our next item, Suti.
Our next item, and these are under alcohol beverage applications, consideration of the issuance of a brown bagging permit to Just For Giggles of Crab Apple, LLC, doing business as Just For Giggles, located at 12635 Crab Apple Road, Suite 250, Milton, Georgia, 3004. Agenda item number 15-198. Ms. Stacy Inglass.
So as you all know probably already, the Just For Giggles changed ownership, and the new owner has come forward to get a brown bagging permit. They have met all the requirements of the ordinance and staff recommends approval of the alcohol beverage license.
Okay, any questions for Stacy? Do we have any public comments, Suti?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing. And again, if there's no question, I'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion to approve agenda item 15-198.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Thurman. For approval, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous, Suti. Okay, Suti, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Sequoia Golf Manor, LLC, doing business as the Manor Golf and Country Club, located at 15951 Manor Club Drive, Milton, Georgia, 3004. Agenda item number 15-199. Ms. Stacy Inglass.
This license is also due to a change in ownership. The new owner is Sequoia Golf Manor, but there is a change in the structuring of the company. It's under Club Corp. The applicant has met all the requirements of the ordinance. This, along with the next four, well, next three items are all owned by the same company, but we do have to hold separate public hearings for each one, so the presentation's going to be pretty much the same.
Okay. Any questions for Stacy on that? Is there any public comment?
There is none, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And...
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Open up for a motion.
To approve agenda item number 15-199.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Koontz, second from Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Suti, if you'll please call into the record the next item.
Next item, consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Sequoia Golf Manor, LLC, doing business as the Manor Golf and Country Club, located at 15952 Manor Club Drive, Milton, Georgia, 3004. Agenda item number 15-200. Ms. Stacy Inglass.
Presentation is the same. The applicant has met all the requirements. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions? Any public comment?
None, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing and open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve agenda item number 15-200. Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Morris, second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Suti, if you'll call the next item.
Next item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Sequoia Golf North Atlanta, LLC, doing business as White Columns Country Club, located at 300 Clubhouse Drive, Milton, Georgia, 3004. Agenda item number 15-201. Ms. Stacy Inglass.
Presentation is the same. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, is there any public comment?
There's none, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing and open for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve it. Agenda item number 15-201.
Second.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Thurman, second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Suti, if you'll call the last one of these items here.
Consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Sequoia Golf North Atlanta, LLC, doing business as Atlanta National Golf Club, located at 350 Tournament Players Drive, Milton, Georgia, 3004. Agenda item number 15-202. Ms. Stacy Inglass.
Ditto.
Any questions? Any public comment?
There is none, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing.
Mayor, I'll move to approve agenda item number 15-202.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Law, second from Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Suti, if we can move on to the zoning agenda. If you would please read the zoning rules and sound the item.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning, petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that their speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. Before beginning your presentation or comment, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization if applicable. The Planning Commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you did not file a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ1513, 3225 Francis Road, by Sexta Omar Martinez Rivera, to rezone from AG1 Agricultural, to R3 Residential, to develop two single-family residences. Agenda item number 15-182. First presentation at July 6th, 2015, regular council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Great, thank you. The applicant's property is outlined on the site plan in red. The current zoning for this particular site is AG1. The future land use map shows this as medium density. And this is a copy of the site plan submitted to us on April 30th. There's some pictures showing the subject site from the rear. The subject site contains 1.45 acres and is developed with one single-family residence on the south side of Francis Road with Crooked Creek subdivision surrounding the parcel on three sides. The site is located within the medium-density residential designation of the City of Milton 2030 Comp Plan. Staff also notes that this property is within the Highway 9 Herbalae District, which does not require the rural view shed. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to R3 Residential to develop two single-family residences on .7 acre lots and an overall density of 1.38 units per acre. The existing home will be torn down to allow for the construction of two new homes. Based on the applicant's site plan submitted to the Community Development Department on April 30th, staff offers the following considerations. And we have enumerated here the development standards for the R3 residential zone, and we show that the applicant meets all of those development standards. Community zoning information meeting. On May 26th, the applicant was present at the community zoning information meeting. There were forces, citizens in attendance for the subject site. They were all residents of Crooked Creek and voiced concern about the location size and overall look of the homes, and if they would be operating businesses in the homes. Also, they asked staff if a buffer would be required between Crooked Creek and the proposed lots. In response, staff stated that no buffers are required between residential zoning districts. Public participation report. Staff received the report on June 12th. The applicant's public participation meeting was held on June 9th between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM at the Brumelow Reese Offices located in Highway 9. There was no one in attendance at this meeting. City of Milton Design Review Board courtesy review on June 2nd. They suggested that a barrier of plantings be provided between Crooked Creek and the new structures on the subject site, that design of homes to be consistent with the architecture of Crooked Creek, and they also suggested the architect, city architect be required to review building plans. The Planning Commission reviewed this application at its June 24th meeting, and they approved it conditionally. They recommended staff's proposed conditions, except for condition 4A1 subsection 2, in which they recommended two driveways on Francis Road in lieu of the recommended one driveway to be shared between the two lots. This is based on the applicant's response that requiring one driveway to serve both lots would decrease the future value of the properties. Stadium is a review. The proposed two lots developed at a density of 1.38 acres per, of 1.38 units per acre is consistent with the adjacent Crooked Creek subdivision to the east, south, and west, developed at two units per acre. The minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet. Front setback is 35 feet. Side setback is 7.5 feet. Rear setback is 35 feet, and a minimum heated floor area is 2,000 square feet pursuant to To the north of the zone, AG1 with scattered single-family lots and a use permit for canine assistance. It is staff's opinion that the proposed use and density is suitable with adjacent properties within the city. It is also staff's opinion that the proposal may not adversely affect existing use or usability of the adjacent properties if approved with the recommended conditions. Three, proposed use density. Single-family residential 1.38 units per acre is consistent with the City of Milton 2030 Comprehensive Land Use Plan map. Therefore, the proposed two lots are consistent with the City of Milton's Comprehensive Land Use Plan and adjacent and nearby properties, and therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of RZ1513. Recommended conditions are as follows. A, single-family, that it be a single-family detached dwellings and accessory uses and structures, that no more than two total dwelling units at a maximum density of 1.38 units per acre, whichever is less. In addition to the site plan received by the Community Development Department on April 30th, 2015, also all areas which are not part of an individual lot and held in common shall be maintained by a mandatory homos association. In addition to the owner's agreement to abide by a minimum of 32,000 square foot lot, that the minimum heated floor area per unit be 2,500 square feet. To the owner's agreement to dedicate at no cost to the City of Milton prior to the approval of a right-of-way encroachment permit, sufficient land as necessary to provide the following. Access to the site shall be subject to the approval of Department of Public Works. Access to the site shall meet City of Milton Code of Ordinances and ASHTO guidelines, and access shall be limited to one driveway within the Francis Road right-of-way. Also, that the applicant will provide bicycle and pedestrian improvements along entire property frontage of Francis Road according to Chapter 48. Also, all proposed infrastructure improvements shall tie to the existing facilities on adjacent properties as required by the City of Milton Public Works Department. And the back of the sidewalk shall be no more than one foot inside the proposed right-of-way. And that is my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Questions to the... Kathy on this?
I just had one question.
Here.
Is the minimum square footage 2,400 or 2,500? Because you said 2,500, and the thing said 2,400.
2,400.
2,400, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Mayor, before you go to the public as well, I conferred with Robin just before this agenda item. There's a topic that I needed to have just brought up subsequent to this presentation real quick that Robin will do before we move on.
I think one of the applicants, or not applicants, but neighbors had brought up the issue...
the issue of the proposing a privacy fence along the interior adjacent to their lots in Crooked Creek. When we have a residential zone, properties against another single-family residential zone, there's no required fencing nor buffers that are required. It's just a subdivision against a subdivision, and obviously, if a private owner decides to put up a privacy fence, they have more than the right to do that at some future time, but it's not a requirement of the zoning ordinance between two different, single-family residential districts.
Okay. So to clarify that, there was an existing neighbor that was requesting maybe?
Yeah, and I believe he's here to speak as well, so he can...
The thing you all of the council can consider is if you would like to add that as one of the, as a condition, as a condition to include a fence there, it wouldn't be something that typically staff would include as a part of a report because it's not required by code, but it, I think you're going to hear that request tonight, and I just want you to be aware that that request, I think, is coming. We certainly wouldn't object to it if you all wanted to add it as a condition, if this were to be approved.
Was there an existing fence there now?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'm guessing we'll hear the answer to that as we work forward with the public comment.
We can always ask the public comment questions. Anybody else?
Kathy, could you tell us why the request for one driveway, staff's recommendation for one driveway versus two individual driveways?
Yes, Sarah should be here representing the Public Works Department. Is she in the audience? Oh, there she is. Sarah's prepared to address that question for you, sir.
Sure. That's just a policy we usually look at with, usually when it comes up as a minor subdivision plat, which is three or two, two or three lots being subdivided, and just a policy to limit the curb cuts on a collector or higher-type roadway.
Is that a requirement or just a, it's a recommendation?
It's a recommendation. There's not a specific place in the ordinance that states that.
Okay.
Rick stole my question.
Bill?
Kathy. Conditions 1 and 2, as it pertains to Public Works requirements, could you go over those, please?
Again, I'm going to ask Sarah to come on up.
Guess on the one, I think it's the first one, required Public Works access to the property. Is there a drainage easement through there?
The access is referring to the proposed driveway. It's not necessarily an easement given to the city, it's just access to the site. That's what the access in that item is referring to. So it's the access from the right-of-way into the property.
Is that standard?
That is a standard condition, so it's saying that when the new driveway is proposed, that that, that access point is subject to approval by Public Works. It's not saying we'll have access to the property beyond the right-of-way.
Public Works is approving the curb cut?
Yes, correct.
How about condition 2? I didn't pick up on that one.
Let's see, in this particular case, it has sidewalk on both sides, so the, I think there's a supplemental item that just talks about connecting to those two sidewalk points. So to continue that, that section across the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no more questions right now for staff, I'll open up to public comment, and then you can always have a, ask questions after that. So, do we have any public comment?
We do. We have one in support and three in opposition. So in support, we have Mr. Scott Reese.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Scott Reese, doing business at 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia, 3004 with Brumelow Reese and Associates. Here tonight representing the Rivera family in their application to rezone the property located at 3225 Francis Road, currently zoned AG1, propose zoning of R3. The property is 1.45 acres, proposing two lots, a 32,000 square foot minimum size. We're proposing two homes of a minimum of 2,400 square feet. If we obtain our rezoning and go forward with the minor subdivision plat and receive approval, Fuqua and Associates are under contract to build the two new homes. They will be owner-occupied, they're not speculative homes, four-sided brick with side-entry garages with similar architecture to what he's building at Triple Crown, Kingsley Estates, or the We are surrounded on three sides by Crooked Creek with CUP zoning, minimum lot size 12,000 square feet, 2,000 square foot homes. Our lots are more than double the size of the current lots that we're adjoining. We have canine assistance, a special use permit across the street, a dog training facility. We're in compliance with the future land use plan. We're not seeking any variances. Everything will be designed to code. We're fine with all the conditions except for 4A1II. The applicant requests two driveways if we meet city driveway standards, meaning site distance and separation. The reason they're asking for this is the problem with ingress egress easements, maintenance easements in the future. If one of the properties is sold, it's hard to contemplate life five or six years from now. You may be, your brother or your neighbor, your best friend is your neighbor now, not in the future. I know those of us that have been around a few years remember the driveway on Cogman Road where the father gave his son the property. Son moved, we ended up with a yellow painted curb down the middle of the driveway with a chain-link fence. You know, if at all possible, if we meet the requirements, they would like two separate driveways. It just works out better. You maintain your driveway, your neighbor maintains his, we don't have any of those In my meetings with the adjoinders, they're concerned about privacy and issues with the new neighbors coming in. The price that the applicant has paid for the property, the time and effort put through to get to a building permit process, these will not be pink elephant homes. They're going to be a attribute to the community. I, you know, I've tried to alleviate any of their fears, and I'll just have to wait, I guess, until after they speak to see if I can address that further. I'll save the rest of my time for rebuttal and to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Do we have next public comment?
Our next public comment comes from Michael Schaefer or Schaefer.
Hello, my name is Michael Schaefer. Live at 540 Heron Run, Milton, Georgia, 30004. And my lot backs up to the, to that lot. And I'm requesting a private fence for the nine of us. There's nine homes that it affects. That's, that's my request. Thank you.
And our next comment comes from Jay Murphy.
Hello, City Council. Jay Murphy, 530 Heron Run Court, Alfreda, Georgia, 30004. Just like Michael, I live next to that lot, would request the same thing, a privacy fence. I guess as we're going through gating and have very tight covenant rules, would like to be able to assure that, since we can assure that they will be in accordance with ours, would like some kind of privacy fence to separate the two neighborhoods. Thank you.
Our final comment comes from Howell Reddick.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Howell Reddick. I live at 550 Heron Run Court, Milton, Georgia, 3004. Basically, I'd like to second the comments of my two neighbors. We all three, our lots are joined the subject property, and our biggest concern is that we live under the rules of Crooked Creek subdivision, which has covenants, et cetera, and standards that are monitored and enforced. This property, of course, will, will not be subject to standards, and so our concern is that the privacy fence be enacted to maintain that separation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any more public comments?
That's all, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and open up questions for staff or, if there's a question, he'll be able to, he'll be able to. If he wants to rebut, or if you have a question for him, he can certainly answer.
I would like to rebut, or at least comment. There are no requirements inside Crooked Creek between neighbors. I've never had a requirement for a, in this case, a less dense zoning against a more dense zoning. Never had one that, in residential, where a more dense against a less dense. I guess I don't like the thought of the precedence of, you know, forcing a new neighbor to provide a privacy fence in a residential neighborhood that's in complete compliance with the future land use plan and the desires set forth by staff and council in their 2030 land use plan. So my point is, is I just don't feel like we should treat this applicant any different than any other citizen in the City of Milton based upon what, I don't know what the fear is. You know, I guess it came up when we put the sign up and the name on the fence. I don't know. I don't, I don't understand. So, anyway, I will be glad to answer any questions.
I'm going to close the public hearing now, second time, and then if there are any, is there any questions for Scott? Go ahead, Bill.
Scott?
Yes.
Number one, is there a fence there now?
There is not.
Is there a planted buffer between?
On the west side, the Crooked Creek, you know, Francis Road to the north, so to the west, there is a line of, not horticulturist, I'm pretty sure there are Lelands, that may be crepe myrtles, that were planted by the, one of the builders in Crooked Creek. They're not, they're all across the side, they're on the Crooked Creek side of the property line. I think a lot of what has happened is the storm that came through two years ago maybe took out some of the neighborhood trees on the adjoining parcels. It damaged a major oak tree at the front of our property that's going to have to come down. So, you know, I hate that they lost the trees, but it's, I don't really understand or feel that my applicant should be required to replant their buffer for them. So, I'm, you know, not trying to be argumentative or difficult, but that's just, I don't feel like I'd be fulfilling my fiduciary requirement if I didn't state that.
Questions, Bill?
We're talking about a privacy fence. What's the definition of it? To what extent?
Is that a tall Ford fence that's going to have to be painted and maintained by, and, you know, does code enforcement come in, and we're going to send a city employee out to force this neighbor to keep his fence up and not someone else?
Well, I guess the point is, is there a design for this fence? What are we talking about?
I don't know that...
To me or to someone else?
Obviously, we have a fence, fencing kind of standard, and what, if you were dealing with a privacy fence, likely would be something at five feet that would be opaque to some degree. But I don't, I don't know that there's a fence that's been designed in this.
I would, I would say that if, if, you know, whether the property owners or applicant elected to, or depending on the outcome here, elected to build a fence, it would have to meet the fence and get a permit.
Well, it's still kind of arbitrary requirement, I think. And if we're going to approve something, I think we need to set some limits or guidelines. Certainly don't want to create a feud afterwards. It'd be party to a feud.
Well, I've just, again, like I said, it's going to be a privacy fence, it would have to fit in with the codes and permit, and obviously, the owners would have to agree on what kind of privacy fence they would like. I don't know that it's the government's job to pick a fence for them if it meets the requirements.
Well, I guess we need to put that in the, in the motion that are, in this item.
If it's something that the council finds fit to add, it is a condition of the zoning, I would think we would look for just a couple of things. I think we'd look for a maximum height and a material of construction, if you wanted to go so far as to say non-chain link, which we wouldn't allow that by our code anyway, but, you know, there's, probably to some degree, if you're, if you're going to include it, it would be at a height not to exceed five feet of wood construction.
Okay. All right, anybody else have questions on this? I would just, you know, I'll make, my, my comment, opinion is that, again, this is a residential, this application is for residential, abutting residential, and typically, there's not a requirement to have a, have a fence. I think it's, you know, as far as the private owners, welcome to chip in together and work together if they want to build a fence, or, you know, the neighbor's on their side if they want to. I, again, you know, don't think that we should be in the business of requiring someone to put up a fence. Be one thing if it's for a different use or, or something that would be offensive, but, you know, you look through most neighborhoods in Crooked Creek, there's not fences in between the houses, so, well, I'm fine if there's a fence there, but I think that should be a private decision amongst the individuals that have the lots along the buffer there if they want to get together along with this owner and split the cost of one, or if, if not, you know, if they want to pay for it or one or the other, I think that's fine, but I don't personally wouldn't want to, you know, require that we force one property owner to put a fence up just at the, because the other property owner wants them to. So, Bill?
I'd agree with you, Mayor. Just recently, when the library was completed, there was an issue, same issue with privacy in adjoining residential property, and the county and that property owner got together, where you have dissimilar uses there, and I think, I think it's probably more appropriate.
And I'll say that on the driveway too. I certainly, as Sarah said, it was a recommendation, but I certainly understand, long-term, you know, things do change, so if, I would be fine too with two driveways if it were, you know, obviously legal or within the codes. Bert?
I'm okay with the two driveways as well and, and the fence. I think that's something they need to work out amongst themselves. I'm not sure a five-foot fence would provide much privacy anyway, so I'm willing to, to vote in the affirmative of this with two driveways.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, staff or comments?
I just want to concur. I think you guys are in the right direction on that.
All right.
Yes.
And if there's nothing else, I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 15-182 with the deletion of, and you may have to help me with this, 4AII.
4A1II.
4A1II with that deletion of that condition.
And then the driveway?
That's, that was that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. I'll take the fence. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt. We'll have a second.
I'll second that motion.
Have a second from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we can move on to unfinished business. City clerk, will please call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of an ordinance to create a conservation subdivision, Chapter 50, Article 5 of the City Code of Milton. This is agenda item number 15183. First presentation was at the July 6 regular council meeting. First presentation was at the July sixth regular council meeting. This was discussed at July fourth, two thousand and fifteen City Council Work Session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I just wanted to let you know that our consultants are here, Dan Bruceard and Bruce McGregor. Should you have any questions, as you know, we did have the presentation last week, but if you would like any refresher of it or any additional questions to be answered, they are here to, to do that.
It's a, it's obviously a public hearing and we'll, we'll accept the comments, but before that, is there any questions or anything the council would like to ask staff or consultants?
I would, Mr. Mayor, I would like to update the council on our process about picking a date for the special call work session that kind of was our direction of a week ago tonight. In asking the members of the council what their availability is, and then partnering up with the availability of this space, there is one day between now and the end of August that we can make that work, and it happens to be Thursday, August the twentieth. I could potentially, there was only three dates total that the council was available that wasn't on a normally scheduled night, and that was the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. So, there wasn't a real opportunity, other than that, that week in August, where the council could come together to have a special call meeting. Mike, I guess, so as a way of a proposed initial date to throw out there at you, August the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, at five P M. would be the date for that special call work session.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that?
But just to make sure everyone's clear, it was based on the work session, it was our intent not to actually be voting on this today, take a, take a position on this today other than to defer it with a discussion at a work session, which will be on the twentieth, but we still will be hearing all the public comments since it was advertised.
Oh, that's right, yeah. We would never want to, about to use a double negative, we always wanna hear what the public has to say on a topic. If they spend the time to come, we should hear that. I took away the direction a week ago today that this was coming forward because it was advertised to come forward and it needed to, so the council could take an official action to let the public know kind of when it might come back for consideration and vote after we were able to identify the date for that special call work session.
Okay. Again, now, we'll, if there's any specific questions now, or if you guys don't, we'll, we can have public comment and then obviously can ask questions. I will close the public hearing.
I'll wait until then.
Okay, Sooty, I'll ask for, call out our public comment, Sooty? We could start with those speaking in support.
In support, I have two that have filled out public comment cards, and I have three names of emails I have received. I can read them to the record. The first public comment card is from Jack Linden.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak about this tonight. As you know, from previous comments I've made, I've been in support of the conservation subdivision concept for a long time. I've actually been involved with putting these kinds of ordinances together from way back in nineteen eighty-five, when my hometown of North Endover, Massachusetts, came up with one of the very earliest versions of a conservation subdivision ordinance. We have, and I've been following very closely the developments in Milton for the last year and a half. I started out thinking that a conservation subdivision ordinance was appropriate, it was going to be appropriate for any new subdivision in, in Milton. I know they work well, historically they work well, they work well in other parts of the country and as well as down south here. But over the course of the discussions over the last year and a half, I've changed my mind. That started, my mind change started with, with the planning commission's exercise to look at various options for thirty-three acre parcel up on Birmingham Road. And, and it became clear to me that although a conservation subdivision would work well for that, that parcel, it wasn't, it was nothing compared to some other land I've seen. For example, Bernard Wolf's property up off of, off of Arnold Mill Road, which is a really beautiful piece of property, very rugged, very hilly, very picturesque, and, and it really does tend to lend itself very nicely to a conservation subdivision concept. So, that, plus a lot of discussions I've had with people, pointing out reasons why, in some cases, a cluster type of design that would occur with a conservation subdivision isn't necessarily the best use of the land. So, what I would like to propose is that what we need is a conservation subdivision ordinance that provides options. And I'm thinking what we would like to see, what we would like to see is options which include sort of a basic conservation subdivision approach, where sixty percent or fifty percent of the land is put aside for open space, and the rest, and the houses are, are put, are clustered together in, in parts of that property. And we'd also like to see, as another option, an option for large, for large lot subdivisions, say, for example, anything more than three acres. And then also another option for smaller lot subdivisions, one-plus acre subdivisions, where those kinds of subdivisions would be able to have the standard type of septic systems that we see now in our AG one zoning. All of these options, we think, should have strong provisions to protect important environmental and historic features, would, I hope, would provide for significant undisturbed buffers along the roadways to the subdivisions and along the perimeter of the plats, and also would, would include certain, for the one acre plus and the, and the large acres subdivisions, a certain amount of that land as undisturbed property. And I would hope that this is something that the city council can direct our city's consultants to come up with a draft that, that addresses this option approach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Sooty, if you'll call the next, next person speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Joan Wonderly.
Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. I'm Joan Wonderly. I live at seven six five Owens Lake Road, Milton, three triple zero four. First, let me thank you all for your service to the city of Milton and to the community itself. While everyone believes in green space preservation and responsible development, the pending C S O document is not the vehicle to protect the citizens of Milton, to ensure that we have true green space and not to increase density. The citizens that all of you appointed to the planning commission have denied that C S O, and they've recommended that you do the same. I will mention three important issues that concern me regarding this ordinance, and I won't go into detail, I'll let somebody else handle that. The introduction of community septic and no confirmation as to who will bear the financial responsibility for a failing system and the impact on adjacent landowners. Number two, the lack of specific language regarding density neutrality. Number three, the definitions of green space. Tennis courts, swimming pools, basketball courts, stormwater facilities, detention ponds. I think when people speak about green space, these items are not included in that, and it's kind of a bait and switch. There are many critical details missing from the current C S O, and I respectfully ask you to deny it. A solution many in the community and the planning commission have suggested is to enhance the current AG one standards, require and inspire developers to add green space to AG one. That appears to be a better path to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Sooty, if you'll please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ms. Laura Renshaw.
Good evening, council. My name is Laura Renshaw. I live at ten sixty Birmingham Road. I need to kind of clarify that we have not, we definitely told our, the people that support this ordinance that this was gonna be deferred. So we have not encouraged anybody to come to support this ordinance tonight. So, we would like to thank the mayor and the council for continuing to work on this ordinance and to have faith in it as a good tool for shaping future development in the city. We applaud the continuing commitment to value conservation subdivision design as an important piece of a much larger plan to address the current problems in the city. At this time, Preservoral Milton would like to suggest two things happen. First, the resolution of questions regarding onsite septic options. The questions that have been brought up are potential failure, maintenance, and the city as a trustee. Cities in Georgia and all over the country have answered these questions. The information for resolution is easy to obtain. There is no reason for this to continue to be a perceived impediment to this ordinance or to be a problem in the public size. We urge the city to address resolution of this problem as soon as possible. Second, we would like to encourage the publication of a third draft to this ordinance. This is because, so far, we have had two galvanizing drafts on different ends of the spectrum, one being mandatory and one being completely optional. There are some obvious changes and clarifications that are needed, and we see profound problems with the current AG one zoning that must be addressed. Due to potential legal challenges with taking, we believe the AG one zoning issues are much better addressed through the conservation subdivision ordinance. So we are suggesting a new draft to contain several different options for development. The menu of options model is an alternative to optional, all optional or all mandatory proposed thus far, and it strikes a balance between all concerns, addresses badly needed changes in the current zoning, and provides additional and more creative options for developers. It is our belief that this model addresses most, if not all, the issues brought up by the community. We would very much like to see these options brought forward as part of a working draft that can demonstrate the public's concerns have been heard, in addition to be used to move the community and the council's discussion of the ordinance forward in a positive manner. Thank you.
Sooty, if you.
Our next speaker is Carl Jones.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you in regard to this dangerous thing of the C S O, that being a conservation subdivision ordinance, being mandatory, put upon the citizens and also builder developers of this community. I respectfully ask you to please reject this conservation ordinance. This is an expensive proposition in dealing with the state of Georgia E P D, opposed to the Fulton County help on a single-family lot on a one acre minimum. The lead time for applying for a permit with a specialized engineer for community septic system has not been tried long enough. The cost for such avenues could reach more dollars than a builder developer has proffered in his possibility of making money on a project. The land holding cost has always been ignored here with the consultants and anybody speaking. And really, either the property's tied up with the original owner while you're going through this process with E P D, or either you go ahead and close the land and you're paying interest on it while you're dealing with the state E P D. Every civil engineer that I have approached in regard to this matter says, please stay away from the state. And that's a quote from Sam Masadi, who has four degrees in soul scientist work. At your work session, I plan to have him. I was going to have him here tonight, but understand that, you know, the actual vote was being put off. Sam's actual quote was, "The cost dollar-wise and time is not feasible." This is a gentleman that did the Blaylock Farms in Henry County for Tom Cousins, four hundred acres. And so, you know, I'll have him here, I promise you, you can ask him anything you want to. The U.S. Supreme Court ruled just last month that the E P, the E P A had to consider cost in any of its rulings. This was handed down at the same time that the gay rights and all the gay marriage, this type thing, was being done. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure one could Google that without any problems at all. Implementing this conservation ordinance is really a dangerous facility on our citizens. There's a lot of people in the audience here that have been holding on to property and, you know, thinking that their children would one day get it, either build on it for themselves because of costs associated with land. And so, you folks, it's in your power, then, to preclude them from doing that or selling the property. I mean, if a man has got an investment for thirty years on a piece of property, and I know there's one lady here tonight's owned property for over thirty years, I was a good friend of her husband. And then to preclude her from making a profit on her land after thirty years, she's lost her husband, he's deceased, and her two sons are here in the audience today. And I just implore upon you that, you know, we're looking at other folks' land and other folks' property, and it constitutes a taking, which is unjust, it's unjust without proper The trust indenture is not a foregone conclusion. The city of Milton may be asked to stand good, to be the trustee for these community septic systems. No homeowner association will accept this responsibility without ample cash reserves. And you're looking at two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars in a cash reserve, and I don't know that that will repair a community septic system. I'm concerned that the staff and also the consultants talk about a park-like setting that these community septic tanks end up being. And so, you know, if we have all of these park-like settings, I mean, who's going to police them? We know from just reading in the Milton Herald, you know, we, we've got some druggies, we've got some sexual deviants. And so, you know, are we gonna let those people in our back door with the community? Construction has always been the lifeblood of Atlanta. I've been here right out of college since nineteen sixty-nine. I've been in construction for forty-two years. And I tell you, that's what makes and moves Atlanta. And so, you know, you're choking it off if you pass this. Now, I would like to read something into the record. It's from a gentleman, Bill Quillen. "The C S O is a bad idea for Milton. The P R M continues to lack transparency, only supporting one side of the argument, leaving out the many potential negative side effects of the C S O. I think the problem with the way you present your argument is your negative, condescending tone toward anyone that disagrees with your opinion. We all want the best for Milton. However, the C S O as written is a sleight of hand. Now you see it, now you don't. I personally find it troubling, given that we all want the same outcome, however, or attempting to discuss civilly different ways to obtain that goal. Instead of being condescending..." Instead of being condescending, taking an elitist, know-it-all attitude, and assume folks are ignorant, how about opening up your forum to discuss ways in which we can solve the problem in a manner that we can all agree on? You talk about propagating falsehoods, yet use the same cheap scare tactic regarding septic system failure from the Chesapeake Bay area, a completely different topo and geographical soil type. It's absolutely invalid comparison on many levels. The consultant last week did the same thing, you know, calling on different neighborhoods and this type of thing that have been successful with this, but we're talking about a different area of the country. It is absolutely invalid comparison on many levels. You have made many blind assertions on how density and sewer will not be extended, yet seem to support it, which is contradictory to your mission, and a classic example of cognitive dishonest." I think the real problem here is that instead of discussing options and solutions that appeal to the majority, you spend an inordinate amount of negative energy trying to bash folks that disagree with CSO. It's more of the same. I got three typewritten pages here. But I respectfully submit this to the secretary. But this blog ran for three days. He was a member of the Preserve Milton, Preserve Rural Milton.
Carl, can I interrupt you just for one second?
And then it got full.
Carl, can I interrupt you just one second? Mr. Mayor, what we, this is not technically a public hearing, so I did not have the clerk keep a 10-minute clock in support of the opposition, because we shouldn't be hearing comments tonight on either of the two sides. We should just be hearing the general public comment. And we do have a rule that typically allows for five minutes per speaker. If you'd like us to, so that we can get through the stacks tonight, if you'd like us to start doing that, we can. It's totally up to you. I know that this has gone longer than we would typically allow.
So, how many more parts do you have?
We have about 10 more.
Okay. I would respectfully then like to, I obviously won't give everybody a chance to speak, but tighten it up a little bit. So, obviously, and if you want to give her the copy, to make sure it's in the record will be. Thank you very much. Yeah, and also, Carl, I don't believe when you first start speaking, if you could just state your address for the record.
Carl Jones, 730 Richmond Glen Drive, Milton 30004.
Thank you. Technicality there. All right, Siddy, if you want to call the next item and if...
Would you like to, is there a time limit you would like us to maintain?
So, I was going to say, in respect for time, if folks could limit to maybe two minutes per person, and then if we need some more time, we'll discuss it with council.
Okay. We'll be, we'll, I'll let you know when that two minutes happens.
Okay. Again, not trying to cut anybody off, but if, I want to try to, the respect for everybody's time.
Our next speaker is Walter Susong.
What was that name, too?
Susong, S-U-S-O-N-G, Walter.
Okay. Walter Susong is Valhalla.
You didn't want to speak? Okay. Then our next speaker is Bebe, B-E-B-E-E, Susong.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, last Monday night was my first time ever here, and my hat's off to you. I am really grateful for your service. I've lived on 10-plus acres for 30 years on Freemanville Road, and it's not just all cute little bunnies, squirrels, and bambi deer. The deer eat everything you do not want them to eat. Bunnies and squirrels eat the rest and multiply quickly. Squirrels love to eat the wiring in your attic. Coyotes eat your dogs, your cats, and your chickens. Chipmunks cause snakes to come around. And mice and rats are a major problem. I live with all the above, but my main concern with the CSO is people. Crime is getting worse, and yes, even in Milton. There are sexual predators, druggies, thieves, et cetera, listed in our paper daily or regularly. I do not want them walking around in my green space. The CSO could put these people at my back door. Everywhere I go in Milton, there are beautiful yards and plenty of green space without taking others' property to make what someone else wants. If someone wants to have deer, squirrels, bunnies, and the like, let them buy some acreage like I did 30 years ago. I am sure they will enjoy it despite the hardships. If they can't afford it here, just like me 30 years ago, they can certainly move north far enough so they can afford it. Please don't let the CSO pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Siddy, if you could call the next speaker?
Next speaker is Scott Reese.
Scott Reese, 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 30004. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, would just like to reiterate that I hope if we pass the CSO, that it is optional. I think there are inherent problems in it. My biggest concern is that it does not suit smaller acreage tracks. I think before we pass on ordinance, we need to have a few exercises on some designs of the smaller tracks. Behind the larger developments where I think it will work with packaged plant septic treatment, the smaller lots or smaller-sized tracks that would have the community septic system, I don't think we've addressed that near enough. So, I would just ask that you please hash out all the problems and not pass a bill, figure out what's in the ordinance, and then try to make the ordinance work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Siddy, if you could call the next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Walter Rekuk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Walter Rekuk. I live at 615 Scarlet Oak Trail. I just want to reiterate what the last speakers said, that I am not in favor of the CSO the way it is written. It is much more restrictive than what we actually need. Limiting it down to five acres is just seems very improbable that that could be anything good. And then to make it have a 60% open space where you would not allow the road, detention ponds, and many other things to be considered in that open space is fairly unreasonable. I think if you really had to look in other communities around the metro area, I cannot find another ordinance of this much open space required. Now, there may be some way up north or somewhere else, but I'm not aware of 60% anywhere. The other problem is when you start looking at these smaller lots that you are creating, basically looking at the ordinance the way it's written now with the 25% impervious surface area that's allowed, when you have 10,000 or, let's say, even 15,000 square-foot lots, your impervious area, the area that's allowable for a house and a driveway and a parking lot's so small, you're going to have very small homes built on those lots. That's not what you want. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe that's what you do want, but I don't think so. I don't think you want to have something comparable. I really think the people that come to Milton are looking for one-acre lots. They're not looking for 10,000-square-foot lots. They're not looking for 12,000 or 20,000. To say that that were, they're all looking for open space and beauty, yes, I think that's an attribute. But when they come to settle on buying a home for their family, they're looking for a one-acre lot, they're looking for a 4,000 to 5,000-square-foot house, they're looking at ability to put a swimming pool or spa if they want, if they want a tennis court, or whatever else they want on their property, that by golly, they made it, they can have whatever they want on their property. But then to say, "No, we can't have that anywhere," just doesn't seem right. We've had many great communities that are one-acre communities, and even the CSO doesn't allow a golf course community considered in the open space.
Walter, I hate to interrupt you, but that's, Mr. Mayor, that's been almost two and a half minutes.
Okay. So, anyway, thank you for your time, and thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you. Siddy, if you could call the next speaker, please.
That would be Kim Horn.
Hi, my name is Kim Horn, and I live at 415 Wade Glenn Court in Milton. And I'll be very brief. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing more time on this ordinance. The ordinance as written is certainly not a conservation tool for the City of Milton at this point. It's just, it's not usable for many of the reasons that people before me have said. One of my big concerns, as stated before, is the community wastewater system and the possible failure and the liability it would put on the city and the HOAs of the community if it were to pass the way it's written. The biggest issue, the other big issue I have is, as the way Mr. Rekuk said, is the small lots. We moved to Milton for one-acre minimums to have, you know, one-plus acres. There's many, many subdivisions that are being built that are very popular and selling very well that have one-acre minimums. I think most people want their own green space, and they don't necessarily need or want shared green space. So, I hope you'll take all the things that people are saying into consideration when looking at an ordinance. One of the better possibilities is probably taking the ordinance that we already have and making it better, increasing the rural view shed, setbacks, you know, all those types of issues. Just take what we have and make it better. Don't recreate the wheel. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Siddy, if you please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Joe Whitley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Very nice to see all of you. My name's Joe Whitley. I live at 1250 Birmingham Road here in Milton. I almost, sometimes I almost say Alpharetta, but I know I live in Milton, so it's great to be here tonight with you. I'll keep this to under two minutes. The deferral, I think, is a great idea. I applaud the council for that. I think that makes a lot of sense, and thank you for that. The work session, I hope to be there at the work session with others. Just a few points tonight, I think we've heard from a silent majority. There are more people behind me and more people ahead of me. I'm opposed to the CSO as currently constructed. I think it needs a lot of work. I really do support AG1, looking at AG1 and seeing how we can improve on AG1. It's been good for us up here. I think one home, one acre, has worked with our zoning. I'm concerned about things my wife dealt with when she was teaching school, which is school overcrowding. It is a problem, and we're going to have to deal with that, I believe, and traffic load on our streets. I can barely get out of my driveway in the morning to get to work, which I have to do. I wasn't born to wealth. A community septic is a challenge. I don't understand how that will work effectively. Some of this has really not worked elsewhere. If you look around, some of the surrounding cities and counties that have tried to do this, I don't think it has worked very well at all. And there are just too many unknowns. And being a lawyer, my job is to find unknowns and to find a way to work through those unknowns. So, I think this may be a work opportunity for lawyers if we were to pass this. And when the planning commission voted seven to nothing against this proposal, that seemed to speak for itself. Rarely do you find seven people who could agree on anything. And I thank you for your time tonight. I encourage the council to give a close look at this, and I respect your judgment. Thank you for your opportunity tonight to share my opinions with you. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Siddy, if you please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Mary Busman.
Hello, Council and Mayor. My name is Mary Busman, and I live on 15620 Thompson Road in Milton and have lived there for 32 years. We've seen a lot of change in Milton and a lot of growth. And I wouldn't want to stay the way we were, but I'm also very anxious about the way we're going. And from what I'm understanding, I think that the conservation subdivision as it is proposed is not complete and is not, we shouldn't be considering that. The AG1 is still, to me, is still maybe a little constricting, but maybe if we enhance it, it might be a better way to look. But I do believe that we need to continue to look at this as we look at our growth in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Siddy, please call our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Bernard Wolf.
I'm Bernard Wolf. I live on 1000 Anke Road in Milton. I put together the Lockup Honey Project. We have 113 acres, and I've joined other landowners that have lived there for years. One of them was born on our property. I'm very much a preservationist, but I'm also a landowner, and I'm representing the family. And also, I'm a citizen of Milton, and I'm also very interested in conservation development. And I wanted to make some comments on that. I've spent three very intense years studying conservation development, and I think it fits well certainly for our property owners. There are several issues that come up. First, the sewer system. We have looked at that system. It does work if it's done properly. The system used at Serenbee, which we're looking at, is basically like a septic tank system, but you use two-inch PVC pipes to naturally purify the water. The, you don't have tanks and pumps, you have basically a briar patch followed by an anaerobic field of gravel in it. If you're, it can be maintained by anyone that pumps out a septic tank. Very easy also to expand into other areas. It takes two-inch PVC pipe. It's very energy efficient. It re, basically, the water goes back to the tape, water table. One thing about it is it saves the community the cost of putting in and maintaining a sewer system. People moving here from Atlanta are terrified of what's going to happen if you don't have control of the bills. These systems, you put them in, they will be generally, they are bought by a private company that actually maintains them and sends you a bill. In Serenbee, I understand that the average bill is $45 a month for a small house, $65 for a big house. So, it's something evolving.
Respectfully, we're at the two-minute limit, please.
I'm sorry.
Let's just, we're at two minutes, but you continue to...
Okay, two minutes, yeah. The other thing is, this is evolving. The other thing is the nature, our property has areas where you can have very dense development. I'd really love for everyone to come out and visit us. We have this natural, beautiful area. Bill's been there, others have been there, too. And it's surrounded by ridges coming in. You could put dense development there and leave all of the other property natural. You have other areas where you could have large lots. You can have diversity. As a landowner, you need to have some density, or you need to have something that's going to allow the developer to justify paying you a higher price. Conservation development, because it's a nicer place to live, you can ask a higher price for that. Serenbee, I understand they're selling quarter-acre lots down there for almost a quarter million dollars. The other thing is, I did want to talk about demographics real quickly.
Mr. Wolf, you know, I think the council's heard this before. I need to ask the mayor, just so we stay consistent with our allowing of public comment.
Yeah, if you could wrap it up.
Right. Well, yeah, my point is, we've got a lot of talented people moving in, and you have some that are old that don't want a big lot. They want a retirement community. You have others that do want big lots. Keep, if we have a CSO, which I agree, why don't we look and make sure we have all the facts right and maybe do some test cases? And while you're looking at the whole design, and then, once you've flown the airplane you designed, make sure... and then, once you've flown the airplane you designed, make sure the d wing ain't going to fall off before you regulate everything and do things that really work. Conservation development is good for everybody. Thank you all very much.
So, Sudi, if you could call the next person, please.
Next citizen is Matthew Mitchell.
My name's Matthew Mitchell, I live at 1750 Providence Farms Lane. I've attended all of the work sessions we have with the Planning Commission, and I've been involved with Milton Grows Green in, in trying to figure out how we deal with this, because what it boils down to is that the current AG1 development will destroy Milton. I, I think that's a given, if it continues the way that it's going. And so, I greatly appreciate the city's interest, I know that we incorporate it as Milton to preserve Milton's character. I think that the best thing in the world we can do is exactly what you guys are doing and what the Planning Commission is doing, and that's find a way to control the growth and to, and to maintain what makes Milton so unique, that unique character. And the schools here are what drive the property values. So the irony is, if we continue to listen to no one but builders and developers, and we do not guide that, then we will destroy the property values that all the property owners are trying to preserve in some of their primary objections to the CSO. That said, I don't think this CSO is the solution. I think that a CSO could be, I think this one lacks sufficient detail, I think it has some substantial flaws in it that show a lack of understanding by the people that drafted it in terms of what needs to be preserved. The definition of green space is one of those pieces that I think shows that. And I think that in the end, if whatever we do isn't profitable, then we are doing a disservice to the property owners. But by the same token, if all we care about is what's profitable for the builders and developers that come in and really have no interest other than the profit of that project, then I think we will destroy both the character of Milton and the profitability that the homeowners and the property owners are trying to maintain. I'm not going to get into all the details, but in a nutshell, I think a CSO is a possible solution. I think this one is not that solution. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you could call the next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Julie Zoner Bailey.
Good evening, my name is Julie Zoner Bailey, and I live at 255 Hickory Flat Road. As I've noted before, I'm a strong proponent of greening Milton and conserving Milton. I appreciate your efforts to that regard. The CSO is not necessarily the correct tool for Milton, especially as it's presented at this point. Instead, maybe modifying the current AG1 development standards could be an easier and less risky way to accomplish additional preservation of Milton's rural landscapes. The Planning Commission spent a great deal of time and effort evaluating every facet of the CSO before you. They voted unanimously not to recommend the CSO based on the risks. Please support that unanimous decision made by your planning commissioners as you go through this deferral process, which it sounds like you might vote on this evening. It's important to note that, again, we can all be for preservation and still recognize that this CSO is not an appropriate tool for Milton. I ask during this deferral period that you please consider the risks associated with the introduction of community septic systems. There is risk, it's been noted by city staff, as well as by the Planning Commission, as well as the EPD, as well as those who have been engaged with these systems, that takes, requires a more detailed evaluation. The language surrounding community septic systems remains obviously very too, way too vague. Legal issues tied to how to prevent community septic systems from being misused in other areas is an issue to be addressed. The allowance of 8,000 square foot lots, that's more than 5.5 units to the acre, there's nothing rural about that that's inconsistent with the premise of a rural landscape within Milton. The yield plan, it's riddled unfortunately with risks, it is not density neutral despite some things that have been written in the paper, it's not density neutral. It assumes that every AG1 parcel would develop at one acre per home. That's not the case, the soil doesn't merit that. We heard Carl Jones last week talk about his 68-acre development, where only 48 homes based on percolation tests can be developed. So there's a lot of risks within that yield plan, it's not density neutral, it must be for this effort to proceed. Definitions of green space, very inadequate. I, I have to say that if you're ever going to have a CSO, you want buildable land to be green space, you surely don't want tennis courts and basketball courts and otherwise non-buildable land to be your green space, because it's not green space. All we're doing is allowing for density.
I need to interrupt quickly and just mention that we've now been two minutes and 15 seconds.
And I'll finish up. Inadequate buffers, as well as limited public input, density bonuses are an issue, lot standards are too narrow, and it shouldn't be on small parcels. I would bid that you please during this deferral process, consider your planning commissioners and the 7-0 vote to deny. It's been a year and a half, and we still haven't come up with a draft that would work for Milton. I respectfully ask that you consider the details of my letter I submitted to you today. Like, thank you very much.
Thank you. So if you please call the next speaker.
That is all the speakers. I do have two public comment cards from individuals that wanted me to read a brief sentence.
Okay.
And then I also have 21 emails that I can read the names alphabetically into the record with their addresses.
Yes, if that's okay with the council, because these emails, if you haven't gotten them, they're all probably right, if you haven't gotten them, we'll make sure to confirm that you've got them, and if you'll read the name and their position, but in the respect of time for the audience, I'd rather do that. Is that all right with the council?
Sure.
The emails, as long as you've got them and, okay.
Okay, the two public comments that were filled out this evening. George Morris at 13675 Freemanville Road, Alpharetta, Georgia, says, "The CSO is bad for everyone involved except the Preserve Milton Rural Group that seems to need a political victory. Please vote it down. If you make it voluntary, it won't work, but will use up more time and money." Thank you. Next, from John Susong at 14860 Freemanville Road, Milton, Georgia. "How many lawsuits can Milton afford to fight regarding this matter?" The next 21 names, I'm going to read in alphabetical order with the addresses and the position they are taking regarding the CSO. John and Marty Blevins, 2145 Country Ridge Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004, opposed. Clint Darnell, 15750 Hopewell Road, Milton, Georgia, opposed. Charles Fisher, 388 Taylor Glenn Drive, Milton, Georgia, support. Gail D. Gill, 575 Hopewell Downs Drive, Milton, Georgia, support. Rick Harp, 410 Highlands Manor Court, Milton, Georgia, opposed. Carol Herman, 85 Arabian Avenue, Milton, Georgia, opposed. Next, Chris and Ray Hoffman, 14475 Thompson Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004, opposed. Mike and Susan Jackson, there's no address on this email, opposed. Next, Martha Kaplan, no address, opposed. Next, Kenny Libby, 16340 Freemanville Road, Milton, Georgia, opposed. Next, Curtis Mills, 16355 Birmingham Highway, Milton, Georgia, support. Lori O'Connor, 15435 Laurel Grove Drive, Milton, Georgia, opposed. Tony and Heather Altita, 325 Taylor Glenn Drive, Milton, Georgia, opposed. Daniel and Sheila Pinerow, 2135 Country Ridge Road, Milton, Georgia, opposed. Bill Quillan, Blue Valley, opposed. Mary Ann Reed, 2495 Northwood Drive, Milton, Georgia, opposed. Cleveland Slater, 13670 Bethany Road, Milton, Georgia, opposed. Scott Womack, 2165 Country Ridge Road, Milton, Georgia, opposed. And that is all the emails.
Okay. And technically, we're not in a public hearing. We, we, we necessarily need to close that. At this point, we'll open back up for council, any questions for staff, comments, or motion on this item. Karen, do you?
No, I think we've heard a lot of good comments, I mean, we've got a work session on the 20th where we'll be discussing all of the details. I think I put forth 11 items that I felt like at the last meeting still need to be addressed concerning the conservation subdivision ordinance, and I look forward to discussing the, the details of those items plus additional ones at the next meeting. And do we need to defer this until the, September or August?
I don't think, according to August the 20th, there is, did we come back, it'd be September the 21st. That would be the, the second meeting in September. If you wanted to look towards the first meeting in September, it's not a zoning matter, so we could go as quick as September 7th. I just wanted to make sure there's enough distance between August the 20th and when it comes back for, for your consideration. Those would be your two options, 7th and 21st.
Does anybody have any comments on that?
What's the expiration date of the moratorium, is that the 12th of September?
September 4th.
4th, yeah. Well, let's, just, does anybody have, Karen, question of the 7th or the second meeting of September, preferred?
I think with the Labor Day holiday, it's going to be difficult to.
Yeah, true. Let's do the second.
I think it's going to have to be the end of, second meeting, yes.
September 21st. Okay, Matt, and then Bill.
Yeah, procedurally, we hear a lot of comments out here, how does this work then? Do we just get together and discuss it on the 20th? Do we look at ideas prior to come up with revised ordinance? What do we, what do we do between now and then?
Yeah, between now and then, in order to get us prepared for the 20th, I've put together a series of very, very, very specific questions that I'm going to be asking each one of you that we need to have and the consultants need to have answered, to be able to bring forward an ordinance that hopefully addresses some of the more specific questions that we still have. Me asking the question of, what questions do you have, was a standard question that got a, a great array of answers, but I really need to ask the same questions of all of you so I can get the answers to the same questions, so that we can have some sense as to what this thing looks like on, you know, mandatory or optional, minimum lot size, greenspace and house protected, you know, there's a assortment of things I need to do in preparation for the 20th. So we'll be meeting individually, talking on the phone individually between now and the 20th. I hope that we'll have something for you to review prior to the 20th, so that you don't come to that meeting with a, you know, where we start to work on it that night, that's never productive, because you can put some work in ahead of time. That was just the one day that happened to exist between now and the end of August that everybody could get together. So, it'll be here, and we'll take away whatever answers we come to or common points we come to that night, with some kind of ideas to what our direction is moving into September. So we can bring something that if you're going to adopt an ordinance, and I say if, because, you know, we were still in that process of formulating what this looks like, if one is adopted, I'd like it to be as close to, there be an agreement amongst the council as there can be when we get to that point.
Bill?
So are you suggesting that, as Mr. Linden suggested here, that we start taking all of these comments and start formulating a different ordinance or an ordinance that's going to be modified through all of these findings of fact and new information and comments?
I'd take a stab, just, you know, what, the way it looks like is, basically got to get kind of a direction of, you know, once all the questions are answered, because right now it's so spread out, then could come up with a, a proposed ordinance or whatever that met the council's desires. But I would venture to say at this point, you couldn't really recommend an ordinance until you got some answers, some more specific answers.
Well, I guess my point is, I think we have enough commentary and have had enough here in the last several weeks and months. Obviously, we need to modify what we're looking at now. So I would, I would hesitate to think that we'll have the same ordinance in front of us on the 21st of September and try to wrestle with each and every one of these points that we've been discussing with. I guess my vision is to have this ordinance as a living document and start maybe proposing different options in each one of the different articles here. And maybe that's the way we approach discussing it. Might defer to our city attorney as to, with him having gone through this procedure before and different issues, some suggestions from him.
Let me take a stab at that first, and I'll certainly hand it over to the city attorney. I don't anticipate bringing forward the ordinance that you have seen today advertised. I don't anticipate bringing that forward. I don't know that I anticipate bringing forward a wholly different ordinance or a modification of the current one, but I would agree with you in your assessment that there have been plenty of comments and plenty of statements made, and it is not, that there has not already been work done towards a modification of the existing ordinance, there's just not sufficient time to have anything other than the one that got published, published. So, yeah, let us, I mean, I say all that to say, let us work on trying to align those comments behind something that makes better sense, and that's already in the works, it just is not in the works to the extent that it was advertised with a complete different document.
Okay, Rick?
Chris had the, the work session, we, I'd asked a question about, and I don't want to say AG1, but one acre with, with certain size, minimum acreage parcel for subdivision development, where we talked about still having one, maybe an option, one-acre lots with, with separate septic, but maybe changing some setbacks, and I think we had some questions in that, whether or not we could do that, or if that was a separate item. And from our conversations, I'm not talking about eliminating AG1 as a category, what we're talking about is underneath, there's some umbrella of subdivision development, changes to subdivision development. Can we do that without going through a whole separate process as kind of an umbrella where we've got a few different options, including maybe CSO, as well as some other options that we revise?
The thing that you're capable and allowed to do is to modify the ordinance that deals with subdivision development regulations. If you start to amend, and I think often this is misinterpreted in, in almost this new jargon that we've created through this process where we talk about AG1 development, that is not a, there is no such thing as AG1 development. AG1 is one of our zoning designations that defines a certain geographical area on a zoning boundary map. There are certain development standards allowed within AG1 zone areas, just like there are in R2 and R3 and industrial and in all of our, in all of our zoning designation. So I think that gets confused a little bit when we call it AG1 development. It's not, it's subdivision development within AG1-zoned land. So if we're not changing the zoning designation, we don't get into the zoning code. And we don't get into the zoning code means we don't have to follow the Zoning Procedures Act to make modifications. If what we're talking about is wholly contained in the subdivision development standards, that's why we're here in unfinished business as opposed to being a part of the zoning agenda from a council meeting. So two very distinct things that I think just naturally, to some degree and unfortunately, have, have intertwined themselves. So I think, I think the answer to your question is that we can stay in the subdivision development regulation and it not be an opening up of the AG zoning designation. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, what I was trying to, I guess, because of the confusion we had at the, the work session, if one of the options we wanted to consider was to say, we've got conservation subdivision ordinance, we're working through these options, what if we wanted to have an additional option underneath the subdivision development that would be one acre minimum per home with separate septic, but also maybe change some setbacks? If we're trying, if we're talking about preserving the rural view shed, that would be an option that we could consider.
I think you have that discretion, so long as you don't use that discretion to the extent that the city attorney would caution you against a, a taking of an individual lot.
So we can change the subdivision regulations without, but just not the AG1 zoning requirements?
Right.
And subdivision regulations would apply to all subdivisions greater than three lots?
That is the way the code is written today.
Okay.
Okay.
We, I mean, from a financial perspective and budgeting perspective, are we able to afford to continue to use the same consultants through this process or utilize them as a resource? Do we need to bring that up as well?
We're within our.
Still within the same.
We're within our budget at this point, I'll need to look at that, and if this draws out much longer and we continue to use the consultants that we have onboard at this point, and we do a modification in the form of a change order, I will have to bring that to the council for your support.
Okay. Bill?
I'm still trying to visualize how this process is going to go forward from today to the 21st of September, and I'm just wondering if, if we couldn't use what we have at this point in time, and with each, maybe I'm repeating myself, each and every article and section, kind of annotate each one of those in providing alternative solutions to, let's. each one of those in providing alternative solutions to, let's pick anything in there, I guess. And based on all of the commentary that we've had over the course of the last several months, I think we need, or at least I do, set a baseline here. And I think we have a baseline with the existing ordinance. We know it has to be modified, but let's go through each and every section and let's list the alternatives for modifying. And I think then it gives us a real basis for discussion down the road. I think we need to organize, or at least in my mind, we need to organize our thoughts and our discussion points. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. And I believe the, there was a document I was going to pass out to the council tonight and ask for you to respond to, a process by which we would organize those thoughts. I would feel more comfortable so that I can understand more fully and completely your response to that. I still like to ask you those questions, but I might want to do it where I actually ask them to you and we can have a dialogue around it rather than sending you with a two-page survey and say, please fill this out and send it back to me. That document is created and it's one that I hope to connect with you all with this week if possible. If you're looking for the path, I believe that there will be then the compilation of the answers to those questions. I think we'll continue to work with our consultants. I believe that you'll see a different ordinance or a substantially modified ordinance come forward as a result of the public comment, the feedback and your comments tonight and then your comments on that survey. I think that's what we will work with on August 20th as well as hopefully bring in somebody to speak to the wastewater questions that you've specifically asked. I think when you come out of the backend of that then is with some type of a roadmap to September the 21st. But I don't want August the 20th to just be a little stop-off point. I'd really like it to be the night that if this is going to, if there's going to be a solution that makes sense for Milton, that the council decides that they want to support, that we leave that meeting of the 20th with that direction so that it was crystal clear as to what we can bring forward for you to take action on in September. I hope that answered your question.
Well, that's my logical process, I guess. That's, and I think you've picked up on it, and I believe that's the direction we're heading in.
Yes, I mentioned that earlier. That's what we've got to do, we're going to do moving forward. Okay, anybody else have anything? All right, we'll open up for a motion then.
That date would be September the 21st.
Yeah, if you make a motion to defer to September 21st.
I'll make a motion to defer Agenda Item 15183 to the September 21st, 2015 meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Thurmond. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous for deferral. Okay, move on to new business. Siddy, if you'll please call the first item.
First item is consideration of a resolution transmitting a draft capital improvements element relating to the city's consideration of an impact fee program to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Regional and State Review. Agenda item number 15197. Public hearing was held this evening, July 20th. Ms. Kathy Fields.
Thank you. Again, I'm available, as is Bill Ross, for any questions you may have on this matter.
We know you want another riveting hour and a half.
As long as it's riveting.
Well, if we don't have any questions, I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make another motion to approve Agenda Item 15197.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Morick for approval. Any comment or questions, or not questions, but comment, discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Siddy, if you'll call the next item, please.
Consideration of a resolution ratifying confirmation of transferable development rights between Robert A. Brandon and the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number 15203. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in your agenda packet this evening a document that is a resolution ratifying confirmation of transferable development rights between Mr. Robert Brandon and the City of Milton. As the city council is aware, the city has had its successful TDR transaction. That is, in fact, Mr. Robert Brandon has agreed to place five acres into a conservation easement. And of course, that was pursuant to the TDR ordinance that this council was good enough to adopt. As part of the closing of that, they have requested, and I think this is, makes a lot of good sense and candidly is something that we ought to ensure that we do, is they wanted a recorded, a recordable instrument in the city records, excuse me, I guess in the county property records, confirming the existence of these TDR rights, something that, of course, is putting the world on notice that there is not only is the property subject to a conservation easement, but also the existence of the five transferable development rights pursuant to the city ordinance. I will tell you that as far as the closing, that has already been executed, but I am asking for the city to also resolve and approve this confirmation that is in your packet. I have reviewed it, I'm very comfortable with it and think it's consistent with the Milton ordinance.
Okay. Any questions for Ken on this item? I'm going to ask for a motion. There's no discussion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution ratifying confirmation of transferable development rights between Robert A. Brandon and the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number 15-203.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Thurmond, second by Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion?
I just want to say it's great we have a TDR transaction. That's exciting.
First one.
So congratulations on everybody working that together, so.
Okay. All right, we'll, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, Ms. Siddy.
Next item is consideration of a resolution regarding the Milton sign code. Agenda item number 15204. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. This last item, I guess on your published agenda before reports, is a resolution of the city council that will lift the moratorium on applications for sign permits and for the erection of new signage within the City of Milton. You know, this is basically a byproduct, I hope the council will remember, of the Supreme Court decision that came out in June. This was the Reed versus Gilbert decision. This is something that most, I will say, responsible local governments have looked at with some interest to ensure that your sign codes are placed in the best light from a defense standpoint as possible. To that end, the city council adopted an emergency moratorium to give my office sufficient time to look at your sign code with respect to compliance with Reed, which we have in fact done. I also heard the council loud and clear that you wanted the moratorium only for the most limited time possible to allow businesses and citizens to be able to speak and draw the advantage of the sign code as quickly as they can. So I have done that. What I have done is put together, and you should have one of these at your station. This was not in your published books. This was actually something I handed out before the meeting. And so it's a, it's a copy of a resolution and attached as Exhibit A is your June 24th moratorium resolution that you adopted. Here's my position on this and the position that I've taken with some of the other governments I work in. I think that in the realm of speech, you know, we could go ahead and put in a moratorium for the next 180 days while we work through an ordinance, but I would rather not do that. And I think that speech is so foundational with respect to, you know, protected liberty interests, that if anything, if I see a problem in our sign code, I think a more responsible way is to put a moratorium on our ability to enforce that narrow section while we otherwise open up the remainder of the ordinance for people to use. So that's what I have done here. So if you will just permit me, the first page of this resolution in front of you is your inevitable whereas clauses, where I sort of set up how we got here. I also, if you go to the second page, you'll see in enumerated Paragraph 1, under the now therefore language, you will see that the moratorium on signage that became effective on June 24th, 2015, as reflected in Exhibit A, is hereby lifted effective immediately. So if you in fact approve this resolution this evening, that moratorium will in fact be lifted and literally tomorrow, it will be business as almost usual with respect to the erection of signage and the application for sign permits. But what I then did is I went through your ordinance and everywhere where I saw a problem with Gilbert, I placed a moratorium on the city's enforcement of that provision. So in other words, while individuals will be able to come in and get signage, we will be precluded from enforcing various provisions of our code until such time as I bring you back a formalized modification of the signed ordinance. To me, again, I think if your court was reviewing this, they would say, you know, the City of Milton erred, if at all, on the side of allowing its citizens to speak. And that's where I want to be. So for instance, just to give you an idea, I mean, I can walk you through every element of this, and if we want to, I'm happy to, but just to give you an idea, so in Paragraph 2A, you will see that Section 642241 of your sign code defines a flag to be any fabric or bunting containing colors, patterns, or symbols. And then you'll see I italicize some language, used as a government or other legal entity or legally organized or organization. Symbols used by or as a government or other legal entity. Again, that is defining a flag not by its, not by its height, not by its square footage, but also by its message, because it has to pertain to a government or organization. Can't do that anymore in Reed versus Gilbert. So we would have literally a moratorium on that language such that until I get the ordinance formally changed, a flag is going to mean at the bottom of Subparagraph 1, any fabric or bunting containing colors, patterns, or symbols. It can't have in relation to the definition what the flag must have in it. Does everybody understand why I'm having to be so parsimonious in my language? Because once you start talking about how it reads, that's content. Section 642241 in Sub B defines illegal activity sign. That by its definition is defining your signage based upon the content. In that context, it would be something that is an illegal message. But I will tell you, something that could be illegal can nonetheless be political. In fact, you may recall some recent Supreme Court decisions where there is literally behavior that is now not only legal but constitutionally protected that may in fact have been illegal in the past, but it was political. And so I think that we need to work on that definition. So rather than prevent our citizens from speaking, I'm simply placing a moratorium on our ability to enforce that. I think that's much better and much more consistent with the First Amendment. Mr. Mayor, again, I want to be mindful of the council's time. I'm happy to walk through this and all of it, but I will tell you that from my perspective, this is more of a me working with the city manager and staff to make sure we enforce correctly. But I'm happy to go walk through every element and every subparagraph of this.
Is there questions or council need to do that?
Just a quick, I mean, just a what-if, playing devil's advocate, if we don't have a moratorium on ourselves to enforce it and we actually do something like that, what would then happen?
Right. Well, first of all, I think I can answer that from the perspective of, you know, I know your staff, I know they're conscientious. Once the council approved this, I know they'll act consistent with this. And I think if we got into a lawsuit with a billboard company or a sign company, I think this is very powerful that we had done everything that we could do reasonably to ensure that we did not enforce our code in an unconstitutional manner. However, I'd be, you know, in front of a judge telling them, I chose and I recommended to the governing authority of Milton that we approach it this way rather than placing 180-day just prohibition altogether on the ability of citizens and businesses to apply for licenses. I got to tell you, I think that's a more compelling argument in favor of Milton's position.
So does this...
So like in Section 2A...
Yes, ma'am.
Where we're just changing the definition of flag.
Yes.
But we're still only allowing one flag per parcel as we currently allow it.
Well said.
So that's not changing any of that. It just changes what, how a flag itself is defined.
That's correct.
Okay.
And in fact, and just to go to your point, I put some catch-all language in the back. And if I could read it to you, before I go to Councilmember Morick, but if I could read it to you, Paragraph 3 in the bottom of Page 3, "For the period during which this resolution is ineffective and until such time as further modifications to the signed ordinance are formally adopted, city staff are hereby instructed and directed that the signed ordinance shall be interpreted in a manner that the availability, land use, or other triggering event or condition for entitlement to apply for, erect, or place signage within Milton shall not have the effect of dictating or controlling in any manner the content of the message." So many of your signs, as any well-drafted sign code, they basically set up a construct where some condition on land triggers the right to put the signage there. I wanted it reinforced, though, that just because you have the right to put the signage there based upon some triggering event doesn't mean that the message has to be in any way related to that triggering event. One of the kinds of signage that's mentioned in here is something that in the Milton sign code is called a grand opening sign. That's strongly suggestive of what has to be on that signage, has to deal with the grand opening. I've taken that away. Can't do it that way anymore. If you want to use your grand opening entitlement to signage to put an eat at Joe's pizza, may not be very bright from a business perspective, but that's, we can't dictate the content. Everybody understands, that's the sort of pedantic, very hyper-technical sorts of nuances we're having to make.
So, Rick? So does this allow us, let's say, new business who want to apply and get their sign, does this allow, this change allows them to actually get their business signed?
It does. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else? No other comments? All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve Agenda Item Number 15-204.
Second.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Coontz, second by Councilmember Morick.
Mr. Mayor?
Any discussion? Ken?
Councilmember Coontz, just for purposes of the record, and that would include the resolution that passed out at your stations this evening?
Yes, I'd like to approve the resolution as is passed out at our stations this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. In a second.
In a second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to reports. Anything council would like to report on? Yeah?
Yeah, I want to say, everybody that came to the Milton Library grand opening last Thursday, great day for the city. I think they had over 2,000 people walk through the doorway of that library on that day. And I've been there since during the day and it is packed and full and being used. So to the mayor, thank you for coming and council members that were there as well, and those are the Friends of the Milton Library, did a great job. A lot of people worked hard on that day and getting us to that point. Now, the good part is that it will continue to grow. And just for all the residents of the City of Milton, we have a library and it's being used and I would encourage you to use it, so.
Okay.
Along those lines, I was out of town and unable to come, but I'd driven by there many, many late evenings and weekends and saw Councilmember Lass laboring away at the barn. It's a good-looking barn and I just want to thank you for our community, for the time you volunteered and I'm sure plenty of materials that you donated and all that kind of good stuff. So we appreciate your hard work on that barn along with, I know you had some helpers, I don't know who they were, but thank you for the community.
I'd like to add on to that, too. I think the combination of that barn and the library, I think exemplifies our vision as to what downtown Crab Apple is going to be like, a walkable community, bringing people together. The library's a destination and I just can't wait to see the rest of Crab Apple develop along that concept.
Yeah, I'd just add to, a beautiful facility. I'm sure the community's proud of it and going to use it a lot. And also to Councilmember Hewitt, too, thanks to the Friends of the Milton Library and the folks that donated money for the barn and salvaging the barn and rebuild it. And to Councilmember Lass for all the volunteering effort and time and materials, work, sweat, and all that that you gave, so I'm sure the community appreciates that.
The labor of love. And we can use more barn wood, too.
Anybody else? All right, staff?
Now, Mr. Mayor, we've got some published staff updates tonight, department updates. I'll ask.
Being mindful of the fact that we still have a few items in executive session to talk about tonight, we'll go through it quickly through the staff reports, starting with Chief Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be very brief. Excuse me. You have before you the statistics. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Chief Robert Egger, who is at the National Fire Academy. Unlike popular opinion, he's not fishing in Florida. Unlike popular opinion, he's not fishing in Florida. He is actually in his final two weeks of the Executive Fire Officer Program at the National Fire Academy. Couple items, we prepared vigorously for the Fourth of July with the new fireworks laws and the potential that might bring, but we feel like the rainy weather kept folks at bay, so we had really no incidents to speak of that were fireworks-related. I think the fire marshal fielded just a couple generic complaints, but there were no fire or medical-related calls that were generated from the use of fireworks. Next week, we plan to have the advertisement for the RFP for our new ladder truck going out. We've been working diligently on that. We have 105-page spec that is very detailed, and you will be seeing and hearing more about a new ladder truck. And then lastly, as part of the five-year capital plan, we have begun the programming for the live-fire training facility and the Station 42 replacements. We've been working with Assistant City Manager Carter Lucas and the architect on those site plans, what will fit where, where we're going to put septic and all those type items. That's the end of my report, if there are any questions.
Bill?
I've gotten a couple of calls, Mark, from horse farm, excuse me, horse farm people, excuse me, concerning fireworks on Fourth of July, and I was wondering if you had gotten any. I understand the issues. Even my dog freaks out during those displays. She was upset from 5:00 until almost midnight.
Right.
But I know it really impacts horses out there and other livestock.
That was one of our primary concerns as well. We knew there would be an impact with the equestrian community, you know, horses being prey animals, they're, they're very spooky, you know, they're spooky easily, and we all know dogs with their hearing abilities are traumatized by thunderstorms and fireworks make a summer sound. We were, we were prepared to offer assistance if we had animals loose or lost dogs, things of that nature, but we did not get any specific complaints or calls for those type services.
I may, in fact, let, you know, Ken and Chris and I have been working on this and talking about it, and Ken maybe too, from a legal perspective, but since it is a state law, I don't believe we can do anything about it, but maybe an avenue is that we do some more communication, especially around holidays and whatnot, and let the citizens know the repercussions, certainly anywhere near barns and horses and animals and things like that. So, we may not be able to adjust the law or change it, obviously, but maybe something that we can get the, get the word out to folks to certainly, so they understand what the repercussions are and the dangers are.
Mr. Mayor, that's right, and, you know, obviously, the state has preempted local governments in the field of, at this point, regulating the use of these fireworks. But I will say that it is pretty clear to me, based upon some of the feedback I've received from some of the, of the various contacts I have, that there is some general angst at the General Assembly level about this, about this law. I think there's been some feedback now that has sort of descended upon some of the, of the members of the General Assembly, and I have every expectation, this will be looked at again in the 2015, 2016 session. So it may be that Milton, again, this is a little bit far down the road, but if you all wanted to make some recommendations, ask maybe some areas that could be looked at, I mean, I think Milton has some unique needs in the metro area, particularly with your equestrian, and that maybe just weren't looked at with careful consideration.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have finance, and I'm actually going to let Bernadette Harville handle that. She is our finance manager.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Bernadette Harville, I'm going to give the finance updates. Earlier this evening, Stacy had mentioned that we're going to have a 6.5% digest increase that was due to the new value assessments, construction, and improvements. Also, you'll notice on the stat sheet that the property tax collection percentage has gone down. That's only due to a recent supplemental billing cycle. So anytime we have Fulton County making the decisions on any appeals, you'll see a new set of bills going out for anyone who owes a difference between the 85% they had originally paid and the new 100% due. So that's why there would be a decrease. The final day to appeal this year's Fulton County tax assessments that went out was tonight, July 20th, 2015, and the county has encouraged all the residents to appeal online if they can. They've streamlined the process and made it much quicker, and hopefully we'll see those go through in a more timely manner. I know in the past we've been asked questions about the timelines on that, and they can take over a year at some times to process those appeals. In addition, we have the FY '16 budget processes underway. Department heads have submitted their initiatives and requests, and Chris, Stacy, and I will be meeting with each of the department heads beginning on July 27th to go over those requests and see what we can do for the next coming budget year. We've continued to do monthly progress, as Stacy has talked about in past meetings, with Tyler Technologies regarding the development of Version 10 Tax Module, and also we are looking at implementing an online module for the business license application to hopefully streamline the process for all of our business owners in the Milton community. That's currently also a Tyler Technology module we are looking at. If that will not, you know, work for our citizens or our residents, we will look at another type of module for online processing of those payments. Lastly, in June, we also administered a public auction for the surplus vehicles from the police department, as well as some equipment, and also the seized items from the Green Adams Cogburn Road property, and that was successful. We're just at the rebid one item. Everything else is gone and good to go. Any questions for finance?
Okay, questions for Bernadette?
Thank you, good evening. I think she did a better job than I did. I'm going to get her to do them more often.
We'll talk later, Stacy. Dave?
Information Technology.
Mayor and council, I was, I didn't put any comments in the staff report, in the staff sheet. What I was doing was, I was going to plan on giving Carter a run-in for his money for the longest staff report ever, and I had a very long PowerPoint presentation with plenty of slides, talking about past, present, and future of IT and all that, just going to wow you, and then decided to be sensitive to time constraints tonight, and I'll do it the next time.
I think the system really crashed, I think.
So, anyway, we did have another increase in the number of help desk tickets that we had, I believe it was 136 for last month. That's probably a high point for a while. It seems like this month, things are dropping off some, whether it's for the holiday, people on vacation, what, things are slowing down a little bit, but that's okay. Gives me time to work on the PowerPoint presentation. Do I have any questions?
Any questions for that? All right, thanks, sir. All right, next, innovation and engagement.
Innovation and engagement, Jason Wright.
So, good to see you. Thank you very much, yeah. Everybody keeps telling me that, so I guess I'll just keep going until I get to Backwoods weirdo territory. So, anyway, I'm going to start off with some of the stuff Angela does. She's been doing a really fantastic job with social engagement and taking over press relations and stuff like that. So, you know, last week we sent a release about the transparency tools. We received some wonderful feedback about that. I've got some stats around that that I wanted to tell you guys. On Facebook, we surpassed 3,000 followers this month. And just to kind of give you guys an idea, I mean, 3,000 followers is not bad, but to give you guys an idea of our reach, so this council meeting presentation on the CARE Award, that, that reached 18,056 Facebook users, and over 400 likes. So we might have 3,000 followers, but 18,000 people saw something positive about the City of Milton that day. The one about Providence Park was 38,400, and that received over 750 likes and 103 reshare's. So, the reach that Angela is able to cultivate is pretty amazing, pretty fantastic. As far as community events, the Flicks and Food Trucks on Milton High School lawn was great, positive feedback, people love it. Next outdoor movie, August 1st, is going to be Grease at Milton High School, and it's also going to be the last day of the Milton Market. Two things about Better Together as well, they had their summer social with more than 30 attendees last week at Broadwell Pavilion. It was a great example of how Better Together serves as a meeting space for residents to plug into the community. It was just a good time, you know? We were able to send Maddie off to college, and it was, it was what community events are supposed to be, you know, little small-town things, what we want happening at Broadwell Pavilion. So, they've just been doing a really fantastic job. And also, we wanted to make sure and thank Councilmember Coons for showing up to the Milton Literary Group meeting and talking about his book, because that's something Wayne's been working on really hard, and he's been doing, you know, Wayne does a ton of work, and he's just been, that literary group is something near and dear to his heart, so you should see something pretty neat coming out of them pretty soon. So, just to continue our discussion from last month, I did want to point out that our stats have been revised. You should notice that this time. Users for last month should have been 11,161, and page views should be at 41,196. If you contrast that with this month, this month we had 16,793 users looking at nearly 41,000 pages, and this is a great sign that our web content strategy is working. So in the last two months, our users, our users have gone up. Historically, we're somewhere around 10,000 or so, so we're now close to 17,000, but our page views have gone down. That means that more people are visiting the site, but they're drilling down less to find what they need. That's a very good thing.
Right.
I want to get a few more months of data under the belt, but it's a very promising sign. Regarding the strategic plan, the response from the community has been fantastic. We've got more than 400 respondents at this point, with more than a month to go. While this is a qualitative survey, and so it's not scientifically validated, it's encouraging to see these numbers approach your traditional sample size validity, so that we can feel confident in the responses. For reference, at our current response rate, we've hit a 95% confidence level with a margin of error of less than 5%. So, you know, considering the survey cost is virtually nothing, that's a huge win. You can feel pretty confident in the data we're going to bring to you with this strategic plan. And I've been working with the strategic plan facilitator, Cheryl Hovert, to produce a workbook for the council and staff retreats. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised at the quality of data that we've been able to get, because we're talking about the National Citizen Survey, our own staff's work with business community, and then online surveys with residents and staff, and you guys got a link today for a, a longer survey that I would really appreciate if everybody would take the time to do. It does take a little bit of time, but it's going to save us a ton of time when it comes to the retreat. And then regarding transparency, I just wanted to let you know that I've added four years of historic data to every one of the metrics available on the website. You can go and check that out now. So if you click on any one of the metrics on the front page in the analytics section, it'll take you to a chart showing the last four years, which is the data that we have. And then I've also got Parks and Rec, ready to launch, online facility rentals and camp registration. Legal has that, that agreement right now, and so the system will be able to handle Bell Park. And if Thomas Birdhouse ever decides to go, they can do that, too. And we can run pretty much anything through there. So if we ever wanted to start our own leagues, if we ever wanted to expand camps and stuff like that, a little bit different than our normal strategy for Parks and Rec, we could do every bit of that, like that. Yes, sir.
Are those rentals online, are they going to be, you just fill it out and you have to request a date, or can you see a calendar determining what date?
There's a calendar, yeah, it's, it's a third-party site, so basically what happens is, to get a good example, you can go and look at what Johns Creek has, because this company, Rec One, is really interesting. They're actually on Crab Apple Road, and to me, they were the best one that I'd seen around. They were fantastic. The cost is like 13, too. So, basically what happens is, we'll give people a little button that says, rent a facility. They click it, and then it gives them the option of which facility they want to rent. It'll pop it up, it tells them everything about the facility, offers them photos, we're starting to, I was kind of kicking around the idea of doing like walkthroughs like you do at, you know, real estate rentals and stuff like that. And it has a community calendar on there, so if somebody's already rented it, that'll be blacked out. If we have our, if we're using the fields and stuff at Bell Memorial when that comes online, that'll be blacked out. So you'll have your option of what you want. It's already set up with the GL codes and everything, so like you go two hours, that costs you 100 bucks, and it's, you know, it, they have the CSV file of all the roads in Milton, so they know whether or not you're a resident, and then it'll add that fee on. I mean, it's all done. Everything's done.
Okay.
That's it for this one.
Questions? Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, Sam?
As usual, I'll keep it brief. Let me start off with the embarrassing part. We have an extra termination that I didn't account for. We've had three terminations this year so far, with people leaving the city, one in police, one in fire, and one in Parks and Rec. So that should have been three up there for the total for the year. The report's actually accurate, we only have two vacancies, a Park and Rec position and a fire position. Our workers' comp claim is ongoing. We expect the, our employee to be back in September. He's been out since May with an injured back, but hopefully he'll be back middle of September from that. And finally, we had one vehicle accident in the past month, a fire truck got a little bit banged up. But other than that, it was pretty quiet. Can I answer any questions?
Anybody have any questions on HR?
Thank you.
Good, thanks. All right, next, we added to our agenda, an item to go into executive session to talk about existing litigation. So do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move into executive session.
To discuss-
To discuss pending litigation.
Litigation. All right, I've got a motion. Councilmember Moore, second, and Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. That's unanimous. All right, do I have a motion to reconvene?
I'll move to reconvene during the meeting.
I have a motion, second, to reconvene. I've got four council members here, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That's one, two, three, four, five, suiting approval of that. And then, do I have a motion that we adjourn?